Um, well, it's good to see.
I still have something positive to focus on and not the storm for a little while.
Yes, I know this will give us.
Love this distraction.
Yes, this will give us a little bit of something fun to do, show you all. Kind of what, what we've worked on, gained some feedback, right? Having a good group like this is awesome because then uh it's kind of some documentation for all of us per se, right? And then being able to give it to you for your teams, for yourself, us to have something as a company where we can um bolster it, right? I think we have everybody, right, Cody?
Yeah.
You got everybody or no?
You're gonna get some weird feedback on your mic though, but before we get started, I would, yeah, I'm, I'm hearing a little glitch. I don't know if it's me or if anybody else hears that. Maybe it's just.
Not hearing glitches yet, but.
Is that good, Cody or no?
Yeah, that's better. I just want to thank everybody. I think this is a great opportunity for everybody to, you know, what's going on in your lives from the last time we met? What are some wins that you guys want to share or some challenges that you've had that you want to talk about? Anybody wanna? Share?
I told Matt that we uh
Some cool events?
We just wrapped up several of our roadshow events, so we're heading to Mexico and Brazil next, but taking a lot of what we learned from the event that we had, he had us at and repurposing a lot of some successes and notes, but yeah, that's our, that's our big win.
John, do you have any like, do you have any like specific changes? Like was there anything specifically like after being at the event and then taking your roadshow that you were like, hey, like this is just a specific thing that we'd like to change?
I think it was more of the breakout sessions that we're doing. It was more, let's have whiteboard conversations and we have presentations for each of them that I've shifted to say, let's have that as a, a aid, but not the driver. That driver should come from the organic conversations versus being forced.
Nice. Yeah, I like that a lot. I mean, having, having moderators curating conversation, right? Just gives people kind of a better, you know, everybody, it's just like we talked about, everybody says they want networking, everybody says they want collaboration, but it's hard to do that. You have introverts, extroverts, you have all different, you know, people not really sure where to start. So if you can give them a starting point and make things comfortable, it kind of allows people to actually go accomplish those things.
Yep.
Nice. Anybody else got any wins? Anything good going on?
I had an event in Charleston last week for thirty-four people. Our company was supplying, this is the client advisory board, so very high VIP level audience. And our company has AV equipment and people who can use it and run it in Denver. We had freight going to Charleston that got stuck in Kentucky because of Hurricane Helene. And we had ruled out using Encore because for a day and a half meeting, the AV cost was twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, Sunday night, we're begging Encore for some help and some equipment. This is a hybrid meeting. There's people in person, there's people remote. And they totally came through with what they had. My two AV guys took the rental car and my purchasing card and went to Best Buy, Target and a music store to get all the audio stuff we needed. The meeting was seamless for the clients. They never knew there was anything different than the plan. And my chief marketing officer of my business unit was there and in the midst of this meeting, we also have for our group between September third and October thirtieth, thirteen conferences and trade shows and three um get acquainted with a partner events. So sixteen other events besides this meeting. And I looked at him and I said, I need help. I have not had a day off in four weeks. I have many trips to FedEx and the dry cleaner to get trade show assets in and out, and this is not sustainable. And I have a vendor in mind. That's my win.
Nice. Good for you.
So we'll be talking soon.
Okay.
And I'm so glad you guys invited me to the Congress because now I have leverage and knowledge that I didn't have before those two days about all the things that not only that you did for us, but all the ways in which you executed that I think um for somebody who has no resources and is an army of one, I, I couldn't be more excited to say, here's what I learned and here are the takeaways. And here's things that we should consider doing.
That's awesome.
Thank you for getting me in on the ground floor so I could leverage it.
Pablo's excited. Pablo's so excited. I snoked these, that's his thing.
I am too.
I'll be honest.
And you can't drown, you know, I mean, we, we can't go under. We have to find ways to survive and execute and succeed. So I think it was timely and purposeful. Look, I have resources. You just need to let me unleash them.
Nice. All right, Cody, you wanna? I've used the stuff that I, I've used the stuff that I learned from y'all and the bones of this framework already three times for like three, for two other hosted events for clients and for one other like trade show execution, I have been using the stuff. It's gold. Like um, I can't wait to see it continue. And I'm, you know, apart from the fact that I have learned everything from each of y'all's podcasts and like applied it too, right? So um, I think it's super powerful. I'm excited. Nice. Nice, nice, nice. Cody, you want to um, you want to start? You can kind of.
I, we're gonna dig into it.
Guide me here. Hold my hand, get me through this and then we'll start. So um, so just kind of like the way that we want to do this, so everybody's expectations are somewhat set and everybody knows kind of how we're gonna go about this is like this can be, I, I want this to be as casual as possible, almost like we're back in the same room together, if that makes any sense. So we've put some uh time, energy, effort in this, I would say from a, you know, one being us starting this, ten being this being completed, ready to deploy to either our customers, yourselves for use, I'd say I, we're at about a six or seven in terms of where we want this to go. So we want feedback. And I know some people give feedback differently. So if you need this sent to you to digest, I mean, I don't really want to give, you know, anybody homework, right? Cause I didn't like homework. Um, or if you want to just pop your mic off and talk, like we want feedback slide by slide. I'll kind of present what it looks like as briefly in, in summary as I can, but then give feedback. If you have an idea, if you feel there's a miss there, if you feel like there's anything that can be added, we're recording this, so we're just gonna go back and then take this framework and drive more information into it and get it more tuned and dialed in. So goal is to after this gain feedback and then get this thing to be like a nine or 10 to where it's almost completed so that we can put the packet together, get it out to all of you for your teams to use. Whether you use it as a training mechanism for people that you're hiring underneath you, whether you use it as yourself as a reference guide, doesn't matter to us. Okay? Sound good to everybody?
Can I ask a quick question before we get started? Are y'all gonna give us a list, a contact list of the names of the people and companies that were there?
Hmm.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. If everybody's okay with that, that's not a problem at all.
I, I really struggled in, in the aftermath of all of this, I've struggled with knowing people's last names and what company they were with because I really you imprint their badge on your, on your head.
Yeah, no, we will um. Yeah, we can absolutely do that for.
I'll make that happen.
Thank you so much. I know it's little, but it's important.
And then just to prep, so basically the way that we've built this out is we've built this out into the five stages that we categorize stakeholder conversations, goals and metrics, pre-event actions, during event execution and post-event analysis. Those are the five stages that we are going to roll through. So stakeholder convos, goals and metrics, pre-event actions, during event execution and post-event analysis. Those will be the core five. We then have a backside of this that we are calling seven strategic focus areas. And I would view these more as critical thinking, Cody. Is that how you would describe them? Yeah, good. All right, yeah. More critical thinking. We don't have to get to that, but if we do, we'll kind of run through it, but you all see it as we go. So just introduction, right? You know, events are not just marketing initiatives. They are critical opportunities to drive measurable business growth. We've talked about this a lot. You hear me write about this a lot. Um, you know, you know, I always use the line about, you know, trade shows and events are not, not a cost of doing business, right? There are sales and marketing channels. So for us, that's kind of just the foundation of everything that we're trying to do, which is take everybody's mindset from coordination and planning and the execution side into strategy and approach. All right. Five stages of event success planning. So one thing I do want to prep everybody with is one of the kind of like changes that we made here was we originally, we set out to do this session. The idea was doing like something, it was more driven towards ROI. But as we got going and as we got talking, what we quickly realized is ROI is a much bigger conversation than just ROI itself. It really spans into executing in these five stages and executing well in order to go have the ability to quantify ROI. So we've really kind of changed um this document away from an ROI-driven uh niche into, into more of a broader framework for everybody. So you'll see that as we roll through it. So the five stages I gave them, stakeholder convos, goals and metrics, pre-event actions and during event execution and post-event analysis.
So the goal here, I, I just wanted to chime in also, you know, Kathy, you kind of um, in, in what you were saying is the it's a really developed test to prove ROI, but actually to give you more confidence to speak up and to position yourself in a way within your company that makes a bigger impact, not just you, but others within your team, when all of you are on the same page and know what questions to ask and know how to handle these difficult conversations sometimes in the beginning or uncomfortable. The more confident you're getting in those, the bigger impact that you're gonna have at the end of the day. So really excited to go through each of these stages with you.
Good, Cody, you can go right to the uh stakeholder conversations.
Sure. So step one is obviously aligning the business objectives and defining the clear event goals. How often are, are we just said, being told, hey, we're gonna be at XYZ show on this date, set it up for us, right? And you're not in the conversations of why we're there and what the goal is when we're, when we're there and who we're trying to connect with. So really getting into those initial decision-making conversations with the team is incredibly important. Then we get into setting goals and metrics. Then we're gonna get into pre-event planning actions, what happens during the event, and then of course, the post-show.
All right. So the first one in stage one, we're talking stakeholder conversations. And I think from, from our discussions with all of you, alignment is critical, right? But also I think the big, like my big takeaway, and you can see here, there's alignment, there's why, there's purpose, there's goals, there's objectives, what success looks like, I can roll through some of these. But I genuinely do think that this, the stakeholder alignment conversation and this step one is such an opportunity for the event person inside of the organization to plant their flag and be like, I am not a wedding planner, I am not the event planner, like I am a strategic thinker and I understand what we are trying to accomplish here. And I think you simply do that by not even having to have to tell somebody. You do that by asking questions. You do that by saying, hey, we are deploying, I don't care if it's a hundred thousand or five million dollars. We are deploying capital from this business at an event. And it's important to understand what your key stakeholders want, right? So that's alignment. Why for us is important, right? Because it's, this is like, why are you at this event? And I think you, you may get different answers for all of these questions, right? You're gonna get different VP of Sales, right? Sales to Marketing to Leadership to CFO to CEO, whomever, whomever is this the stakeholders, you're gonna get different answers, but it's about gathering information because you're the gatherer and then you're curating. Purpose here, I mean, look, determining what the event is for. This is a little bit what we talk about all the time with uh pipeline impact. What's happening at this event? What are the real goals? You know, is it lead gen? Is it more awareness? Is it more for customer retention? What are the specifics here? You know, you're asking about short-term and long-term goals. I think this is a big one. I think one of my favorite questions when you're talking to a stakeholder is you know, and we have at the bottom, what does success look like or what are you hoping that we accomplish? What are you wanting out of this? Because if you don't know what executives want, when you're done, you could think you have this great. Oh, you're fine. You could think you had this, where are you going? You gotta go back. No, no, don't go to goals. I want to stay on it. No, that's okay. Um, I think having those conversations, you're saying, hey, we're going to do this event. And essentially, what is it that you're looking to accomplish? Now you can hold people accountable to, hey, you've, you asked me to go accomplish this and we went and accomplished this. And I think that's really powerful for an event person. Cause a lot of times there is a ton of hearsay, ton of subjective emotions and feelings towards events. But when you gather that alignment and saying, hey, look, I had conversations with all key stakeholders and this is what we're trying to accomplish. Another powerful thing inside of this, I think, is, so say you're, right, you're talking to sales, you're talking to marketing, you're talking to executives and you're getting all different kinds of answers. Why not be the person that puts that elephant in the room and said, hey, everybody, just had a conversation with A, B, C and D. Asked this question, we're all over the place. Is there any way that we can get together and come to an agreement on what we're trying to accomplish so I can focus in for us? And I think overall, as you see this, right, we have alignment, why, purpose, goals, objectives, what does success look like? And then I think company and executive initiatives are important. I think we all know uh CEOs, CMOs, CFOs, they always have different initiatives and things that are important to them, understanding those and getting aligned on that um is vital. So this is stage one. Anything, anybody thinks we missed or anything, anybody thinks they'd like to add into this?
I might suggest adding kind of how you determine who those stakeholders are. I found myself in a situation recently where there were probably way more stakeholders involved in decisions related to an event than necessary. And it created a lot of confusion and a lot of back and forth. So I think even just taking it a small step back and saying, who are the stakeholders? Who is the ultimate decision maker? Like who, something comes up to a, a draw, who's the, who's the tiebreaker there? So kind of aligning on that as well, I think is, that's gonna be important for me moving forward um and some others might do that as well.
Yeah, I like that Nancy. Do, do you know, could you give us an example of how many you're talking about in that instance?
The ideal, how many I think are probably an events person, somebody from marketing, maybe, maybe a marketing manager and a marketing leader. And then one or two people from the business side of things. Um, we've had meetings with six or seven people from the business and getting a lot of different conflicting information. It's confusing and quite frankly, waste a lot of time. So I think of, you know, having a core group of four to five people who are making those decisions is um, it, it's gonna be our, a driver of our success moving forward.
You know, that would make me think.
Core, sorry, we have core and extended teams, right? So it's two to three people that are the drivers and then that extended team is those that are contributors, but not necessarily the people making the final decisions. And so that off, that extended team is sales, marketing, you know, individuals that are executing the event or the strategy, but they're more of the execution than the make the final decision, just to help us streamline.
Yeah, I think there's an important, you know, an important differentiator between those who you want to help with your decisions versus those who you're just informing of what the decisions are. And so I like that, John, a core group and then a, a larger group that's just informed on what's going on.
You know, Nancy, that makes me think with what you're saying and with what John's saying is in this beginning step, being able to identify, you know, who is there for valid feedback for you? Cause there's people that are gonna give you feedback and have opinions on what's going on. But then when you're talking like decision-making, when you're talking like, hey, we have to come to a conclusion here. Who are those core people to be able to get in a room or get on email and say, hey, I need a decision. Where are we going with this? So that I know how to plan, unless the decision's your call, but oftentimes it is tough to make that decision with so much feedback.
Exactly. Yep. I think that's.
That's good.
Yep.
I was just gonna comment that you know, I think there's a, at the, at the risk of being captain obvious, like I've seen a lot of stakeholder conversations that are really about, you know, what you're talking about strategic alignment, but end up getting into event design and what their opinion on what they think, you know, we should be doing. And I think if there's a way to kind of manage the agenda and say, we're, you know, we're, we're just talking about, you know, goals, objectives, alignment, you know, some, some, what success looks like and not, you know, get into event design. Because it, and you'll, you, I'm just always, there's always that creep where we start talking about venues and, you know, execution, so.
How many TVs they want.
Right.
Greg, do you think that's just?
I think that's really important. You're right, because people do want to weigh in on that kind of stuff and you don't necessarily want them to.
Do you think that's just drawing a line in the sand?
What they hated about the graphics last year.
I think like it's important, yeah, like I think it's a great point. Like you have to um draw a line in the sand and say, hey, you know, this conversation is about this. It is not about this, because if you start letting people into the weeds, if you start letting people into the details, everybody has an opinion on what those details are. So I think that could be a nice thing to add in here, Cody, with Nancy's is essentially
Absolutely.
Important for somebody to draw a line in the sand and say, hey, like this conversation, you don't have to tell people it's not about this, right? Cause then they're gonna want to talk about it. It's just, yeah, you gotta say, hey, this conversation is about this and you're just setting up, it's like sales 101. Hey, do you have 30 minutes today? I'd love, you know, are we still good to talk about this, right? We're talking about this right here. Cause I think then that'll keep people focused. And then when person says, well, like, hey, are we doing a lot of greenery at, you're like, oh, okay, no, 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 we're, we're talking about this, right? You can just divert them back. Yeah, that's a great point. Love that.
Matt, is there, is there any particular reason to not um, to not say what we're not talking about, right? Like I, I like the idea of like, hey, we're talking like topics like do's and don'ts, right? Like we're not talking about this, like anytime anything on this gets said, we're gonna hit a buzzer, whatever, right? Like, but this idea like to, to really put that boundary of like, hey, this is not about, you know, where the restaurant is, what the booth design is, whatever. This is about results, ROI, you know, like um, goal, whatever, objectives. I think that'd be an interesting thing to be a part of the agenda.
I think a lot of people have, a lot of people in this room have different, a lot of people in this room have different uh scenarios that they're in, right? Where they don't, where they maybe don't have like um, like I think if you're in a very collaborative room, it's easy to say, hey, we're not talking about this. We are talking about this. But if you get in a room with like, you know, people that are either bosses or whatever it may be, it's hard to tell people what not to talk about. And if you point them in that direction, they're gonna want to get into it um on those things. I know from our standpoint, when we work with clients, we, we very much so set up calls a certain way because it's not that we don't want them to talk about certain things, but a lot of times clients will go to the end before they talk about the beginning. Right? And that's the same thing with this. So you're just trying to delay. So I think it matters on the room. You have the right room. Yeah, for sure.
I think what you can do to, to control the narrative and the agenda is if you have the the leadership in, in the room, in the meeting, you're clear on what we hope to achieve. So sending pre-wire communication on, here's what we're discussing. We're not gonna deviate. That's the next step. And then using that same pre-wire for the meeting, then hey, here's what we're covering. We're not gonna talk about X, Y and Z, just A, B and C.
Yeah, love that. Any um, any other add-in for stakeholder conversations? If not, we'll go to stage two. And we'll show you, Cody, I don't want to burn through, go one more slide. So you know, just so they can see the deck. So what we did was we put some examples together with questions and asks and things to put. We don't want to roll through this stuff because we think it's just better in terms of the document of giving specifics. But yeah, let's, let's go to stage two, Cody. Okay, stage two, setting goals and metrics. And you know, look, I, I think this is one that people probably tend to get too loose on. It's a, you know, you know, to Greg's point about saying, you know, can I say something too obvious? Like this is such an obvious, it's ridiculous, but I find that when you get to setting goals, metrics, what ends up happening is it just gets these vague goals. They're not specific enough. And you know, just from listening and conversation and talking to everybody, I think we have to get as specific as possible when we're diving into this. You know, I continually say that objectives on the show floor and, I mean, I'm sorry, objectives pre-show, during show and post-show should really drive goals, right? Like if you have a goal of ensuring that you have fifty meetings, right? That you gotta have fifty meetings because you know that those fifty meetings will produce five pipeline deals, whatever is example, you gotta have an objective to help you drive meetings. That's, that's the, that's how it works backwards. In goals and metrics, I think this is really when you start talking about pipeline impact. And when you start having an understanding of at your event, what is really going on? What is actually happening? I cannot stress enough, like I, I, so many conversations where people don't really know, they're not truly dialed into. What is, what is transacting at their event, right? Like is it leads? Is it opportunities? Is it deal acceleration? Is it um, you know, we have example, membership and trial signups, right? I mean, do you have new partnerships? Do you have distribution channels that you're locking into? Like what is going on? Is your average sale, is it a host event and your average sale is going up and you're having your customers there? Like what's happening? And I think this is the one step where you have to have those conversations and know, because then those goals and those metrics shouldn't have to be built around what is the type of pipeline that's being developed. What's happening after the event, right? What do we have here? Identify immediate wins. Yeah, that's, this is a good one, Cody. I think I wrote this on the plane to you, right? Identify, yeah. Identify immediate wins you can measure. This one's important, I think, because people, as they get longer sales cycles, we've talked about this, people have long sales cycles and they're waiting. You, you have to have the ability to show success right away. Nancy, I think you and I talked a few times about your scorecard and having a scorecard. So to me, you know, immediate wins that you can measure is a really good example of, you know, they typically are your objectives, right? Hey, you know, we had sixty meetings. Um, you know, another one is, I don't know if anybody works for anybody here, but trial signups, a lot of people have memberships that they're getting people to try to activate and they get trials. So how many trials did we get in the first week? That's an immediate thing that you can get feedback on and say, hey, you know, we're up twenty percent from what's normal, right after the event. We saw a spike. You know, things like A and B leads. Yeah, they're just leads, but we are grading them, A, B, C, D, and we have A, B leads. I would say one of the last thoughts I have on the setting goals and metrics and in this stage is not going kind of like uh hog wild and having too many. I think it's more important to have less is more, but really good goals and really good metrics that you're trying to hit that matter. I think they're similar to KPIs in a business or KPIs in a department, right? You need stuff that really matters and really moves the needle. And part of getting to that is having good conversation about pipeline impact, what's happening at your events. So you can get to a point where you're setting goals that you know it will move the needle if you hit them. Would love some feedback on this one. People have examples, things that they do, things that they track, goals that they push and set for. Would love to get some in here.
I think that's all, makes a ton of sense and, and is, is right on track. I mean, the, the one thing that um that my team is kind of working on now, we've got the scorecard as you mentioned, but then who gets, who gets it? Who gets to see the metrics and the goals and what impact does that have on the larger organization? So we've started sharing our scorecard with very top-level senior leadership because we want a little bit of pressure or a lot of pressure on people to complete the scorecard and also to set actionable, realistic goals for events because they know that the senior leadership is gonna be seeing the results from the events. So maybe just having something about kind of where, where are those final, like where are those results? Go, who gets them, where to end and, excuse me, and, and you know, what's the endpoint there?
I like that. I like having somewhere to go. Where, how many people get your scorecard after an event?
Um, well, it's about to change. So we're about to start sending them out to our entire senior leadership team, which is about twelve people and encouraging them to cascade that down to their teams as well. We want as many people to see it as possible. Um, again, because we want people to see what's going on with events, but also just to kind of up the ante a little bit on um, on being strategic and setting those goals and, and really tracking against them.
Are you getting feedback, Nancy? Like when you send a scorecard, are, are you hoping for feedback right away down the road? An initial like looks great or hey, what happened here? Like what, what does that look like?
I mean, yes, yes, to, to. I mean, yes, yes, to, to all of that. We want, we want the initial feedback. We also want to use that information with in making decisions on whether we participate in that event moving forward. So a couple of different, um, a couple of different goals there. Um, we also want people to realize that there, these events are a huge investment, both time, financially, and you know, we get requests all the time. Oh, we just want to send a couple of people to this, a couple of people to that. Well, there's a real impact to doing that. Um, and we want more people to be aware of that.
Hey, Matt.
Yes. Jody, we do something very similar.
Hi, Jody.
We have our objective set up and we'll be tracking, we had, we do a debrief meeting um with the entire onsite team. We review the metrics that came in uh at the end. We also separate our leads by nurture, warm and hot. And so as we start to track kind of those levels, um, it goes then into Salesforce. And then the goal is that when we link them with a campaign ID, we can pull that data, um, you know, six, nine, 12 months down the line to see if that event had any kind of impact on either an increase in business or new business that's been acquired. Um, and then we put it into Tableau. Again, we've got a lot of platforms. We put it into Tableau, which then allows us to also add ROI, um, I will say ROI-ish, uh, we'll put in what the budget was and what we spent. And that allows us to kind of get an idea. We do express a caveat when we share our scorecard and what we would call ROI to, you know, again, I use it loosely with the senior leaders who are making those budget decisions and where we plan on exhibiting later, very, uh, very much like Nancy. Because sometimes those leads, there might be one hot lead, so it doesn't look like it was very productive, but that one hot lead brought in enough business to
Yeah.
you know, cover this event two times over, right? And so there's a, there's an asterisk that says you can't just look at this flat. You've really got to understand those additional components, but because we have those tools that we can dump the data in, um, it helps kind of do that calculation. Uh, and then they can use it later. Otherwise, we were, you know, up until the last few months, we've been using Excel to just aggregate all of that information so that the teams across the different business units can see how the events are performing, because they can't be on an, an every debrief meeting. So if that's helpful, um,
Yeah.
in the sense of, of how you can take it and share it with others uh into an abbreviated kind of data mining kind of concept.
No, I like that. I do. I really like the nurture, warm and hot as well. I think a lot of people have different grading skills that they're, that they're working on. But having some ability to create clarity on the leads that have come in, I think is huge. And I think another stage of this, Jody, kind of what you're talking about is like, we have in, on the back half of this, we have the seven strategic focus areas. One of those areas we're calling is unit economics. And I think that's the piece that kind of you're talking about to a degree is like, one big lead could be the home run. Like, you don't have to hit 20 doubles at an event. You could hit two home runs and that's it and win the game. It's that simple. So having the ability to be able to share that, because not everybody has the understanding in that sense, that that's how an event can work.
I think a lot of executive leadership, when they look, when they look at data, they're often looking for certain names or certain organizations. I've been a part of lots of conversations where at least, you know, executive leadership is going, if we could just get these five people, you know, good meetings with a very small group of people. And you know, to Jody's point about, you know, one big win can, you know, drive everything. But again, that can get, that gets into event design, right? So is the, is the design of your activation, you know, really cater to those five or six people? Or are we, you know, are we, are we designing for a, a different objective? So I, I think there's a, there, it obviously really depends on, on the organization. But I'm, I, I've, I've often been surprised when you're like, and some of the questions that I like to ask are, you know, are there a few key contacts that, that, that we're trying to get in front of? And you know, that can radically change, you know, how you're allocating your spend.
You know, Greg, you, you saying that. So I've done similar in questions where when we start getting to the conversation about like, hey, okay, we have this great idea. We have these cool activations. We have this cool plan. You know, it eventually comes to the conversation of how are we going to get people to the booth? And when you start having that discussion, whether it's booth or an event, right, is this idea of like, sometimes it becomes too large and everyone is thinking like, man, how do we get mass people there? I will always narrow the conversation back to what you're saying, which is, hey, who matters?
Right.
Who are the 10 people that matter? 20? I don't know. It could be five. It doesn't matter. But like, who are the big accounts? Your sales should know that. That's a big piece with partnering with sales. I'd go to the sales team and say, hey, give me the 20 game-changing accounts, right? Are five going to be there? And then I would start there, because those are your home run balls that you have to get to come to the booth, that you have to get to come to your host event, that you have to get to attend your dinner um as a focus. So I love that. I absolutely love that thought. Anything else on this? You guys want to keep rolling? Let's keep rolling, Cody. Let's go to next. More examples on this, right? Just such build the slides. Okay. Stage three, pre-event planning actions, right? It's all about building a strategy to win. I think this is really where it gets, this is a huge step, right? We kind of put it into one. Um, you know, we were just talking about, we put, how do we get asses in the seats, right? And that is a huge one, I think, when it comes to pre-event planning. It's something that when we've run shows and had conversations, that is a question that comes up over and over and over again, is how do we get people to show up? Another important piece here is, and I know a lot of you probably do this, it's ABC, but we felt like it had to be in here, is you gotta have like a one to three pager for all staff. Because if you're going to spend the time to create a concept, um, you know, a theme, uh, activations, different things that are going on, just kind of being lockstep with your team at your events. Everyone's got to know what's going on, when it's going on, how it's going on, uh, talking points, whatever it may be. Yeah, good.
I love that idea. We give those out for our shows. Nobody reads them. I mean, honestly, we have to, you know, especially consider the questions that come back at you.
I would read it to you. If you sent it to me, I would read it. No, I know.
Nobody reads them, but what we can do, what we take it a step further on is we have the, I'm sure you do the same, dear. We have the in-booth meetings day of. So every day, hey, here's a reminder of what we're doing. Um, I set up a Teams chat. That's what we use, Microsoft Teams. And so I will send it via email and then I will create a Teams chat for those people on site. That's here's all of your information. Here's the material that you need to know. Here's what you should be saying to help aid in conversation. And then I'll have it the day before, day of, post-mortem, that um, end of each day, having to herd the cats.
Yeah, you drop some Easter eggs in there too, and then you see who's paying attention.
Yeah, you know what it makes me think as well? Is, yeah, I mean, you're definitely not going to get people that fully pay attention, read the debrief and are in there, but I think it's also a way of holding people accountable, right? I mean, it's absolutely way, because if you don't have this, if you don't have things listed out, it's very difficult to say to somebody, like, hey, how did you not know? But I, I would use it as an accountability piece, because once, you know, you also have to remember, if sales is coming back saying, hey, you know, these leads aren't very good. Well, you could say, hey, okay, that's, that's fair. And we can talk about leads not being good. But also, like, you hold them back accountable to things with pre-marketing, things with during the execution, understanding talking points, like all of the things that go in there. It's, it's an ecosystem when you do events, right? It, it does take a village. It takes a lot of people to get it done right. Um, and you have a lot of pieces that are flowing. So I think one thing about this is constantly having it, constantly keeping it updated and using it to sort of hold people accountable. And then this goes hand in hand with working with marketing and sales. Right? You have to be able to collaborate pre-event. I, I'm a firm believer that like working with sales on getting people into meetings, getting people into activations and everything is, is vital. Kind of goes back to what Greg said prior. Which is like, start specific, who's important, right? What's, what's kind of game-changing accounts? Talking points and qualifying scripts. I don't know how many people do this or how dialed or detailed they get into it, but um, you know, we have certainly done it and I find people are more comfortable when you do it. And I know it's probably not for every show, right? Everybody has tier one, tier two, tier three, you know, different, you have regional shows, smaller things, it's difficult. But if you have messaging, if you have an initiative, if you have a um team going to a show, having these things ready to go, I think makes people more comfortable versus, you know, not as comfortable. Because some people, they, they act like they can go to a show and knock it out of the park, but they really can't. They don't have openers. They don't have questions for people. They don't have um ways of just engaging in conversation. So I think talking points and qualifying scripts, you know, I've done this um with Pablo a bunch. I mean, he's, he's excellent at it, right? So like, if anybody ever has a time where they're going to a big show and they have a team and you just want ways of creating conversation, you know, give Pablo a reach out and he can come up with some of that. He writes really good opening, easy talking point style stuff. That's not your normal, like, oh, hey, what, you know, what are you doing here? Where, you know, he's very good at going the opposite direction of that and asking somebody a question like, uh, you know, what's your future TED Talk? Not that that would be the one, but um, he's good at that.
Please, anybody who reach out to me, it's my favorite conversation. I'm always down to have that one.
They would love that. Yeah. Um, the next piece that we added in here for pre-event, for us, this is, you know, our brand experience framework at Rockway. This, this is where we come up with concepts, themes, messaging and strategy, right? This is what we use. We have that brand experience, a framework. We can give that out to pretty much anybody. We've been updating it and, you know, making changes to it, adding questions into it. But this is, this is basically how we do our work when we roll through the customer, we roll through brand, we roll through why, we roll through a whole bunch of different things to be able to build a foundation pre-event, to come up with an idea that makes sense, to come up with some sort of hook that, that drives goals, initiatives and ties everything together. And we think that once you've done that, that's when you could start talking about raffle engagements, giveaways, activations, apparel, booth design. People constantly want to go there first. They always want to go there. Like, hey, we're thinking of giving away this. My first question is why? Why? Like, you don't even have a theme. You don't have a concept. You just know you have a booth and, you know, you're trying to do a cool giveaway. Well, let's, let's come up with a foundation first. Let's come up with something that sticks, something that makes sense, something that you can talk through. Um, you know, for example, at, at EMC, we tried to make sure that everything made sense. We tried to make sure that everything, you know, was filtered through the same lens. And I think that's what brand experience a framework does for you. Uh, and then allows you to talk about, you know, for example, we didn't give, you know, like a, a perfect example is would have been super easy for us to fill your hotel room with a bunch of crap. So easy, right? I could have given you pens. Uh, I don't know, all kinds of junk. But we didn't because you're event people. So that was the lens. The lens was that we knew what kind of people were. So you've been to a million shows. You've seen every tchotchke on the planet. You understand sustainability. You know it's a waste. You've had the headache of having too much of the junk. So we went the opposite direction. But it was based off a foundation. It wasn't just a, a good idea. It came from a foundation. So there's plenty more to go into this pre-event one. Uh, this is really more so done through our lens, I think. So I would love to get some feedback from pre-event planning actions, you know, and it is about strategy, but anything else that people would like to get in here, you know, we would love to see. Anything?
I think you guys covered this one pretty nicely. Um, I don't have any ads to this.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's more, it, it really is more focused on the strategic side of things. We know that there's a million things that is going on pre-event. And I think there could probably be, you know, Cody, if I'm thinking about this out loud, I think there could probably be like a sub page to stage three, which essentially is all the coordination and all of the coming together things that have to happen, because there is a lot of that, right? And I think if we're building a doc out, yes, we want it focused on kind of strategy, getting results and just like a little bit of an uptick. But there could be another page solely just for that stuff, because there is so much work that goes into it.
Yeah, and everyone has their different processes, right? This is where you guys live and breathe most days. So, you know, everyone has their different goals and their different ways of executing these components, but I think the core components are, are spot on for sure.
Yeah, Jody, I like the um, the pre-event remote call, like having a call, right? I think John mentioned during, so in our during, maybe it's the next slide, but we do have a thing. We're having like a, like a morning, evening pow-wow, midday pow-wow, whatever it is for like a check-in. But I do like that. I'd like to add that in there, having a pre-show call with like key people that are going to be there so they can ask questions. And now you're even further holding people accountable, I think, which is important. And it's stressing, it's stressing this idea of the importance of this event that we're not just showing up, right? We're showing up with a plan. We're showing up with, with actionable items. Cody, why don't you do stage four? Um, so I can stop talking for a second. You do stage four, please.
So stage four is the lead capture strategy, right? Like, how are we getting leads into system? Like, how are we having the conversations on the floor? How are we tracking them? How are we grading them? Right? There's so many components to this and every single business is doing it a little bit differently. But really, the execution is, is key, right? So um, when it comes to lead capture strategy, what's the personalization? One thing that we love doing is, you know, immediate touchpoints, day of, are you reaching out to those leads saying, hey, it was great to meet you? Is it through the app? Is it through their emails? Is it connecting with them through LinkedIn? Grading them? Absolutely. I love the, the nurture, warm and hot. Uh, Jody, I think that getting B to A leads is your number one goal, right? So getting better, closer relationships with the Bs to get them to As and then getting those As to, to closed one is where you put most of your attention. And then obviously the nurture stage is where you spend a little bit more time warming them up, building a relationship with them. And getting as much information as possible when you're having these conversations. Matt, you've brought this up before, you know, having maybe a, an, an assistant that's on the floor, listening to these conversations and taking notes for them. One thing I've always brought up is Plod with, or some sort of AI listener, right? You know, deploy something like that for each person that's on the floor having conversations, so it can record them and they can go back and, and remember these notes, pull the transcript and put it into the system.
I think that's pretty common, Cody, like
Yeah.
it, at least it's from my conversations. When people do have trade shows or events that are extremely busy, a lot gets lost in translation for them. A lot. So I think like
I mean, you're, you're looking at so many people and how can you remember who said what? And you know, there's these personalization touchpoints that happen within, within the conversation, but you only maybe remember five of them and some, some of the details of some people. So how can you get better at gathering the quality info? What is, who, who is in charge of tracking that and collecting that and then reporting on that information in, in an organized way is really, really important.
Cody, I think there's some detail there, like as, as you're going through that, like, is, that's a little bit of teamwork either at the event or on the trade show floor, which is saying, how do you give people five, 10 minute breaks so they can go disengage? Get some notes, get things in the CRM into an Excel something, because when you get busy, you get busy and then it's just kind of running. And I think there's some detail there that we could add in on that side of it for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. The morning and evening pow-wows, right? Checking in, making sure everybody knows why they're there, what their role is, what the plan is, staying organized, being focused. And checking in at the end of the day, giving everybody a, a chance to decompress, share insights. What are some issues? What are some gaps and challenges? What did we win at? What do we need to do more of tomorrow and really staying aligned? The immediate touchpoints, we kind of touched on it, but, but really this quick touchpoint, many people think, oh, well, you know, they're busy, they're traveling. We don't want to, we don't want to talk to them, you know, until next week. You're totally losing that chance and staying top of mind. You're not asking for anything. You're not trying to get into a sales conversation. It's just a, hey, It's just a, hey, here's my contact information. It was so cool to meet you. It's great to talk about your dog, right? You know, hope, hope all is well. And, and all you're doing is starting to build that relationship. And then you have an opportunity to stay engaged with them later on. And how do you do that? Right? What are the tools that you're using? Is it LinkedIn? Is it the app within the show? Is it finding your email and getting that and just immediately emailing them, whatever it might be, um, that works for you. And then of course, um, I love this one, Matt, draining your social battery, right? Like just put it all out there. You're going to be drained at the end of the day, but is 1,000% worth it? When you are pouring your time and your energy and your focus into these conversations and making the day go smoothly and having really, really good time, right? The, the more energy you put into it, more everybody's going to have a good time.
I think, so I like that one just because I know with the events that we've done, I mean, yes, I'm in the position where I, I am the CEO. So when I'm the, when I'm the driver of something, I do tell our team, whether it's a networking event, whether it's an event we're hosting, whether it's a trade show, it's like, I need you to bring your all. I need you to be ready to network, be charismatic. Like I know sometimes it sucks, like there's time I need 15 minutes. I just want to go crawl in a hole and just like sit by myself, right? I get that. But I think having that conversation is important. Sometimes people just need to hear it. They just need, they just need you to say like, hey, like this, this is the time when you have to turn it on is, is now. This is when you need to be able to speak to people, be curious, ask good questions, communicate, smile, be charismatic, like this is the time. So you just have to give them a little reminder to, you know, turn it on. We'll give you some time to, you know, whatever, just come down from it. But, um, I think that's important.
And lastly, I think, you know, this is one of the most important, you imagine all of us were trying to build relationships, but it's really hard to do that via email or texting or LinkedIn, right? When you, this is why events are events, right? In-person engagement to build relationships and to have real human to human connection and, and conversations. This is how you actively engage with the attendees, like getting, um, curious about them and why they're there and you know, what they do. And really try to get them talking to uncover the real true opportunity that you have with them. Yeah. Anything else you think would be added to this section?
I'm not seeing anything, Cody, for during the event. I mean, we got the, we got the morning, evening. You know? And the pow out, like I think that's one that people miss all the time and it's super easy. The immediate touchpoints and follow-ups, I love those emails, you know, lead capture. I think we could probably get a little more detailed in the lead capture side, right? We've done a couple, we've, you know, done a couple of shows now. We did, uh, with Zach at Mobley. Capello, right? We've had a couple software companies on and having discussions about the way those softwares work for people and how they connect to CRMs. And then now some of the AI tech and tools that are attaching to it, which allow you to use like seamless AI zoom info to get better contact information. That would be something for me that we should maybe detail in there is some more, you know, everybody's CRM things.
And that's one of the, the core focus areas, right? Cause tools and technology is going to be an important discussion along every stage of this. So what kind of tools can enhance this stage? What technology do you need is absolutely important and everybody uses different things. What integrates with your current CRM? Some don't even use a CRM, right? So how are we, they're really going to track their leads? And for you, Dia, you know, you had mentioned, you know, not everybody's reading your summaries. Well, maybe during the morning and evening powwows, are you doing pop quizzes, right? And have some like little prizes or something, if that incentivize them, it depends on your team. But you know, check in on them, say, okay, who knows this? And you know, you throw them, you know, Starbucks gift card, whatever it might be. But they're going to start to get trained to understand the importance of, of these documents that you're putting together because it's so incredible, incredibly crucial to this stage to make the day run well. But if they're not reading it and they're just going with the flow, that just doesn't really, the end result isn't nearly as, as good. So when you're able to kind of hold them accountable, like Matt said, in fun ways, they'll, uh, start putting that fire under their butt.
And John, these docs are great that, that you put in here. I was asking about putting them together because it's, because I would need Cody to do it. These, these are really good.
It's a, it's a ongoing conversation with our sales leadership, but the issue and concern that they had was not understanding the process. So I had to quite literally spoon feed them the information so they understand from A to B to C to D, here's what happens, here's what, what we're doing. But I do have to drop, um, I'll watch the recording, but Cody and Matt, thanks for this outlet and taking us through all this information.
Yeah, thanks for joining, John. And did your wife have the baby yet?
She did. Uh, three week old and, and two year old now. So it's pure chaos here.
Yes. All right. We'll hang in there. Hopefully you get some sleep.
We're five hours. So, all right. Thanks, everybody.
Five hours, about an hour or two at a time, but yeah.
I don't miss those days.
No, no. Yeah. I like how he laid some of those documents out. I think they're really good because it's, uh, it reminds me of some of the, you know, when we're creating job books for the show floor and the event floor, it's like highlighting things and you're creating documentation for who's reading them. And I think that's a important piece of that is like, you can't just write documentation the way you want to read it. You got to write documentation for the person that is going to read it. So it's simple for them to read. I think they, they did a good job with that. All right, let's go to the last, last one. So we can get everybody out of here in a little bit. All right. So stage five, post-event analysis, ownership and revenue accountability. My, my biggest thing here that I wrote, and I really did this when I was on the plane, Cody, and I wrote this to you, was this idea of quantitative and qualitative, right? When you're doing post-analysis. And I think for your tier one, for your bigger events, your marquee events, you as the event person, the qualitative can sometimes be as important as the quantitative for you because you're there, you can feel what's happening, you can see what's happening. And that instant, immediate, practical, like pragmatic thinking is something that sometimes I think gets lost. People will typically experience the event and, you know, are they really thinking in that moment? You should always be thinking like, how can this get better? Where did we miss? What didn't work? Where is the flow wrong? Do we have the right people here? Uh, are people engaged? Are they disengaged? Much of what I've seen come back from surveys quantitatively or results of events, you kind of feel them while you're there. So I think it's important to delineate between the two and have both. I think how you go about creating the post-event analysis, I know, I know from our side of things, you know, we have started to have post-show debrief calls almost after every single job, particularly the marquee stuff. Some of the smaller stuff, you don't really need to, it can be quarterly, but the marquee stuff and we're not really, you know, we're open and ready to talk about some of the logistical things. Cause you know, things go wrong and things happen and you want to make sure you have that conversation in clarity. But a lot of conversation around like, what were the conversations like? You know, what, how many leads? Well, what were you expecting, right? Hey, I have it written down here. We're talking 50 leads. We did 40. Is that good? Is that bad? Oh, they were really good leads. Okay, that's good. So we don't need 50. Okay. Diving into that because I think it allows you to consistently and constantly make adjustments. And this is somewhere that people miss. They just, it's, oh, it worked last year. Oh, oh, it's, it's, uh, yeah, you know, we're just going to pull the playbook from last year. Oh, that went well. Yeah. Oh yeah. Attendance is good, right? You just start rolling through. It's very easy to do that. And I think the quantitative and qualitative, creating some analysis post-event is really, really big in saying, okay, how can we constantly tinker with this to make it better? Greg, do you, do you have something on that? So
Yeah, I was like, um, this may be just a personal pet peeve, but I feel like there's a, there's, there's this disconnect in the handoff between what's captured at the event, at the show, and then this kind of uh, post-event analysis. And it really, it, it oftentimes I think is indicative of the friction between marketing and sales, right? But my, my pet peeve, and I don't know that I really have a solution to this is, you know, I've experienced this when, when I've attended events. You have a, a really substantive conversation at the event on the show floor. You're capturing good data, information that gets captured and then delivered to whatever the sales process is. And then the follow-up conversation basically doesn't change anybody's behavior and they go right back to whatever qualifying process they use, right? And they ignore the information that was captured at the event. And that's just, it drives me crazy because I'm like, we've, and it can really alienate your, your potential prospect, right? I've, I've spent my time at the event with whoever, you know, what was staffing that. And now you're going to put me through the same qualifying questions that I already answered. You know, when I was at the event, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but I, I
Yeah. It's like everything, you give it, you take all that time and energy to collect it and then it just goes off and dies.
You know, and, and I know this is a challenge in a lot of organizations. And, and I've spent most of my career in sales, right? So, um, I think that you, you know, if we can address that, shine a light on that. It, you know, the, the flip side of that is, you know, when you're following up on a lead, you're in sales, you're following up on it and you know, you've got a maybe substandard, you know, lead capture process. And someone's checking boxes or saying that they're interested in XYZ product. And you bring that up and then you're, then the person's like, I don't know what you're talking about. Like, I don't, that's not what I was interested in, or that's not the follow-up information. So I don't know, I think there's, there are some technology tools that can help aid in this, particularly if you've got lead follow-up that's got some automation in it and you can, you know, understand what they're looking at based on what you followed up with them. But I, I really feel like, you know, maybe this is high level stuff, but I'll stop rambling. I just.
No, I, I think
is really common.
Yeah, very. I think the size of the organization matters, Greg. Like I've seen the larger the organization and the more spread out people are, the more complicated it becomes, right? When you have these regions and you have people, right? That's, that's an obvious. I think it really, yeah, like all the tech, all the tools in the world, I think they only help solve a problem to a certain point. Okay. Like they're going to have to be used the same way as like, is it a focus or is it not? Meaning I've seen really small teams do really, really well. Because essentially when they get done with an event, that they're meeting within a day or even inside of those days and they are running through. It's like, hey, I, I spoke to Greg at the event and like, here's all the information. Greg needs A, B, C, and D in the next two weeks. Here's what we're going to do. And actually building an action plan for each individual or all those leads. Cause very rare, you need to build an action plan for 150 people. I mean, if you do, that's great. But again, larger scale organization becomes a lot harder.
Yeah. I think maybe you're, maybe we, you're backing it up into, if you're, if you're asking those questions of the sales organization, like what information are you actually going to use? When I'm, when you're following up? And, and, and get that buy-in so that when they get that, they, they actually, you know, you're listening. I mean, maybe that's the better, better way to think about it.
Accountability to the process, right? So it's not just passing them off, but, but then checking in weekly, or is it in a weekly reporting or monthly reporting where we're asking for the status of these things and holding those accountable to, you know, if there's any leads that came in that were tagged in the system from that event and no activity has been done on them, well, that's holding that individual that owned that lead accountable to executing on that. But yeah, accountability to the program, to the process, but also accountability for the ownership of the lead.
I was gonna
Go ahead, Nancy. No, go ahead, Nancy.
I was just going to say the same thing, Cody. It's just account accountability, holding somebody responsible for what they say they're going to do. And having a leader that also is responsible for accountability. I, um, was on a call with our head of sales the other day and he mentioned, we just wrapped up our big customer event a couple of weeks ago. And he said that 89% of the leads from that have been followed up on. So he is tracking it very, very closely. So I think having somebody on that level too, just holding everybody accountable makes a huge difference with that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I was going to say, whether it's a, I mean, whether it's a leader or whether it's a point person, it's somebody that kind of has to be in a way, project manager-ish of like, hey, we've gotten these leads, this is the information. And okay, where are we at with it? Right? Because if you are going to really personalize follow-up, you have to make sure that that personalization travels with it. And, you know, I think people screw up on personalization all the time because they, they immediately think like their product, their service, when really it's more of a human to human thing. What is the conversation that was had? What is the string? What is the thread? What is the, um, simple thing that could be used to follow up with, whether it's a resource, whether it's a referral, whatever it may be, or hey, I heard you mention this. You know, I have somebody that I know that does, right? Whatever it is, but someone's got to see that through from the event, the note-taking and information. I would say a, a sales leader is probably going to be that individual. And depend on how teams are built, finding a point person has to be important.
And that should be assigned earlier on, right? If, if you're anticipating that we're going to be talking about this in stage five, okay. Then that conversation needs to happen in stage one and two of this is what we want to track. Okay. Who's going to be response? Who's going to own that number? And that's that follow-up stage, who's actually going to own it? And I'm going to check in on you. I want you to tell me who's been reached out to and the percentage that have responded, right? And, and you know, out of those hundred leads that we got, you know, 50 of them ended up having calls. Okay, great. Right? So ownership of that is really, really key.
Going back to, uh, what Greg was saying of like how people follow up, uh, I recently used just that, um, I think we talked about this a lot at EMC, right? This idea that everybody goes to events to solve a particular problem. Yeah. So to just kind of tie it all together, I gave everybody on that, on the show floor, the task of, hey, at the very least, you need to rate each person that you talk to as a marketing follow-up, sales follow-up or executive team follow-up and get the one thing that they're coming to solve for written down. So we have that for everybody. And that created this like really nice baseline of, you know, if you get into a deeper conversation, you got something better to follow up on that on, cool, right? But like, at the very least, you should have this one thing and who's going to follow up. And we were able to like, keep track of, you know, like keep score of like, who got it and how many of these were missed. Which I say all this to say, creates this baseline of like, to Greg's point of like, what are you following up with? It's like, are you at the very least following up with this? And if not, then what are you following up with? You know, like, can you kind of like have a deviation of like better or worse from there? Pablo, if you looked at one of the slides that, that John sent, he has a little bit of like a post-show and it has like some screenshots of stuff. One of the thoughts I was having when you were talking was like, could we create something? And it may be generic, but maybe we could use examples from even like our follow-up from our events. Cause I think at times we've done a good job with it or getting some examples, right? Maybe from Dia or Nancy or John and building out some kind of template that says like, this is what follow-up looks like. And actually putting in screenshots, writing a couple clever emails, showing an example that they could plug and pull. Cause people are also getting really good with chat GPT now where you could basically do that as well. You could take something and say, hey, write me a follow-up email that looks like this as a tool, because I do think there's some power in there. I mean, I've, you know, we've had a lot of salespeople, I've worked with a lot of salespeople, I've seen some pretty bad emails go out like to somebody, Craig's laughing, it's true. So, you know, after an event where it's really, there's no personalization, there's no touch to it, there's no, whether it's, um, it's not getting anybody's attention. Let's, let's just say that. Yeah. Yeah. That might be a good little add-in in, uh, in this post-show is some examples.
I would even take it a step further of like, as the events person that's there, right? Like tabulating at the end of the day, like what are the whys of why people are there? To then just have one person on the lookout for like finding answers to the whys. Um, would also be a centralized resource of like, all right, now people that are
Um, would also be a centralized resource of like, all right, now people that are following up with this why? Here's what we learned at the conference. People are following up this why? Maybe getting a little too complex, but. No, Pablo, I think the problem question is a huge one. I know that when we did exhibitor live that first year, that was something that before I was interviewing people. I would just casually, like if we were talking, I would just say, I said, like, what's the biggest problem you're trying to solve right now that you want to learn here at the show? And that question hit every time. Some they, everybody has something. They have something. Burning that they're thinking about that they're hoping they can get an answer to or get a resource for. So is is that a way for somebody to be able to follow up better? Whether, you know, introduction, resource, referral. At least at least even ask, hey, did you figure this out? By the way, here's my shit. Who did I give the other day? I gave somebody I asked that question and they were talking about they're having to do more public speaking. And they were asking that was kind of something. And then I there's this guy who I follow on Instagram who I love talks about like communication, public speaking, presenting. Uh, so I I gave her that and she was like, this is incredible, right? But it's just simple things like that. Like, what do you? You know, what's going on? What's your problem you're trying to solve? Cody, do you want to roll through the seven strategic focus areas or?
I didn't want to dive too deep into them, but I do think that this is an important element of the stages to go like. Get better. It's almost like the elements that make up the whole formula, right? So I will send this entire deck out. To everyone. But here's just a high overview, either the non-negotiables, right? What are these must have? Objectives that we've got to hit business critical goals, curveballs, the things that happen unexpectedly. We all have them happen to us, right? Whether it's staffing or. What was it? The interview that you guys just did with with the guy from Mobley? He said, you know, his booth didn't get shipped or one of his clients' boost didn't get shipped. And so they ended up just doing arm wrestling in the middle of the booth and it ended up being incredibly successful. And I thought that was brilliant. I'm like, okay, cool. Let's have some fun, right? Curveballs, planning for those as much as you can, pipeline, impact, intangibles. Unit economics, we we touched on a little bit, team collaboration, right? Who do you need in the right places? To be responsible for different things and and help this whole thing move. And lastly, technology and tools. So we go into those further. And and I'll send this deck to you guys. And then lastly, we kind of have. At this point, a worksheet that kind of ties everything together, but but really what I. In order to make this a really robust tool that you guys will actually use out in the wild and that is impactful for yourselves and your teams. The feedback that I'm hoping to get is what's missing from this entire tool right now as is. Do you need more examples? Are there more worksheets or or sample questions or prompts that we can include for you? Layout, right? Is this too long of a deck? Is this good for like a one time presentation to roll out to your team? But then after that, do you really just need more of a condensed? Document? What types of materials will help you? And your team deploy this easier? And ultimately, as we use this, there's things that might not make sense or you think that are missing along the way, right? And that we need to to clarify on, but this is really a tool for. For you guys, you own it, it's yours. And so we just want to make it as useful and impactful as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things we could do, Cody, is I mean, it's it's a lot of information, right? So. I think what we could do is we have a lot of good feedback on these five stages today. I think you did a good job of putting together the seven strategic focus areas. Maybe I'll take another plane flight and and get you some notes on that. So I could get him over.
Only time I can get him to focus to get some notes.
Yes. I'd like to go through that more. At this point, because I think the way I'm seeing it iron out now, I think it could be almost a separate booklet or or attached wouldn't matter, right? And then maybe we get this back out to everybody and starting letting people to utilize it, give it to their teams. Talk about it, use it in meetings, whatever the resource may be. And I think we have a good enough group in here where we could probably have more calls. We could probably do a show with it, bring some people on, have some discussions about it, right? And just continue it and keep adding to it. You know, just like we've we've done with our brand experience builder and stuff like that.
Absolutely. Would it be useful for everyone to have quarterly meetings to where we can come together and start to, you know, continue, improve our skill sets and have conversations and support each other along the way? That would be my goal, not just wait once a year to hang out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love that idea. I think it's really helpful just to have these conversations and to learn what everybody else is, what everybody else is doing. So I'm totally game for that.
Great.
If there is a. If there is a want on Jody, I saw you like ask about this like public speaking guy. I I often will get with people who have like a talk coming up and I have. A framework of how to develop it, how to present it, whatever, that I think is super helpful. So if anybody has like a talk coming up and they want to go through that, or we want to just host like one of these where I just kind of like go through one of these frameworks. Um, for a public presentation, I'm I'm super into that. Or also the intro thing, right? Like, I hope everybody has my number and able to DM me because I'm. I'm happy to like just have those conversations whenever.
I think this is a fantastic toolkit, but here's my question. What about the data that we produced at the event? I mean, we came up with list and list of things. But I would still love to be able to see again because I'm not sure I got pictures of everything. Do y'all still have that content?
Yeah, Pablo, I think you had taken a bunch of notes, ton of pictures and we can turn it into a doc for you.
Yeah, because I I kind of thought that I guess I had a different conception of what this was going to be about. But I would still love to see all that content that we came up with because there was a lot of value in there.
So there was definitely some times that the cameras were off because we were trying to like keep stuff, you know, like the sanctity of it, which I think. You know, like inside the rooms, there was none of that. I think when we ended up doing the what do we people really want to talk about where we had that list of software that we kind of developed? I think the best we're going to get there is a picture from it. Um, but I can I can dig into how much of that. Is that what you're talking about, Dia? Like when everybody was like.
When we did the whiteboard session, right?
Yeah.
There were all kinds of, I mean, when we reported back on things, there was all kinds of great stuff on it. It wasn't just the websites. So.
Yeah, we have, we have pictures of a lot of the boards and a lot of the presentations and and the and the discussions. That could be an action item.
I'm just asking, is that a resource that our team, that that folks who attended can have? Because I because I was.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That was going to be distributed for us.
Yeah, absolutely. We just have to get some of that together. Like I said, we have the images and stuff. This was more a focus of ours from that session was trying to put together some form of documentation to be able to kind of have release. And get and get get feedback on. But yeah, I mean, there's a ton of stuff. I just, we'd we'd have to narrow down. Cody and Pablo kind of exactly which sessions. And what we would want to put up. There's some nuance to some of the information Dia as well, right? Like. A moderator, you know, I was doing some moderating, so I would just write things kind of the way that I hear them. And detail them out in order to get it down into documentation. Oh, Pablo just texted me the the technology one. Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm texting. I'm texting y'all like all the all the whiteboard pictures that I have that.
Okay.
So we we can just kind of get started on that. Yeah, yeah. I like honestly, like we can go back to old Doc Foley. I think we can pop this into chat GPT and have it spit out a PDF of these notes at the very least. Yeah, Pablo's handwriting is not good. I'm looking at the whiteboard stuff now. It's not great handwriting.
He probably tells Monica better. Yeah. He did ask earlier if he could start with the harmonica.
I'm glad he brought it.
No, you turned that down.
I have literally used the harmonica three other times since like I I I forevermore will use this harmonica.
Well, this has been wonderful. I really appreciate your guys' time and your feedback here and. You know, have it take a chance to digest this and review it. I'll send it to everyone as well as this recording. And I'm looking forward to the next one.
Cody, we should. Oh, go ahead, Nancy. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, this has been really great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's it's awesome having everybody come on and talk about this. We we had a conversation. I would love, you know, Nancy, you, Dee and Jody are still here. We were kicking dates around for EMC. And one of the things that we noticed was SEMA bumped back into the end of July where they're typically in the front of August. August, like second to four is usually when they're going. So we were kind of looking at calendar and looking at dates for EMC again. And. We were actually thinking of going in late June that this year to kind of give ourselves more breathing room because you have Fourth of July. And then I know, you know, I communicate a ton with the ELX people. Uh, and they run their event. I think John's a part of that now. And. That's that's that was similar week to us in like mid-ish July as well with Mark Brewster and and that whole crew with Explory. Uh, so we were considering. Kind of late June as the 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 options for running EMC again. It would it would probably be. What Kobe said, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, this time, kind of eliminate the Sunday for people, go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
We want everybody's input, obviously, on what gays work best. So we were thinking, you know, Monday dinner and then, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, fly back home. And we were thinking in terms of weeks. Of availability, is June even a good month for everyone? But we're what we're seeing is May is tough. And and July is tough. So we were thinking. June 16th, 17th and 18th or. The week after or the week before.
Yeah, I think the week after it's like the 21st, 22nd, 23rd. For dates. So we just want to throw them out, everybody.
Twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth.
Yeah.
I could do that week. I could do the 23rd. I'll be in in London the week of the 16th, so wouldn't be able to do that one, but I could. I know for me, I could do the week of the ninth or the week of the 23rd, though.
Okay, good feedback. Greg, how about you?
I'm just trying to get through this month, but. Yeah, I I should. As far as I know, those dates work for me.
Trying to get through the next couple of hours.
Second or fourth week of June.
I mean, that's just.
The later in June is probably better, but.
Yeah, this is great feedback.
I have a fam trip for one of our shows that's in late June, so. Um, they may not be able to be there this year then.
You have what in June?
A fam trip. We usually go to the site of the next year's conference. And tour hotels and restaurants and special event facilities.
All right, well, what we're going to do, I think, is we're going to get like a. Do a little bit of a quick poll. Yeah, with the people, right, of who was there before we start inviting more people and everything of that nature. So we'll pick some dates out that we think work at this point in time. We'll throw them out to everybody. We'll get a little poll and then, you know, I would love to make a decision in the next two weeks, Cody, on a on a date. So it's locked in and people can book it and be done with it. You know, this, you know, this way we can make sure we have the right returning people and.
Yeah, in my situation, can you just put in there? I'm not sure yet checkbox.
You got it.
I won't have.
Yes, of course.
For for months.
We'll put that for you, dear.
Just for me.
No.
I'm not sure about much these days, you know, so don't worry about it.
I'm with Greg. I got to get through October. I got to get through next week. Nancy, you's going to be in Vegas next week, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll text you in San Diego and we'll find a time to grab a coffee or a drink.
You guys are gonna all be on Vegas? Oh, I forgot about it. We talked about that.
Yeah, there's two big ships going on at the same time at Mandalay Bay and I've got a team in both, so.
All right, well, I'm coming to.
We'll have our reunion.
I just need half an excuse to go to Vegas.
That just absolutely makes my day.
You can go.
Come on out.
Take a picture, send it to us.
Yeah, we'll post it in the Slack channel or something.
Perfect.
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Well, good seeing everybody. Thanks for showing up.
Please be safe in the hurricane and we'll see everyone soon.
Take care.
Thank you. All right. We'll see y'all later.
Thank you.